Did you move yet?
I do think, I do think part of this, I do think this is a wager that there are a lot of losses. No bad change.
Please rise for the pledge of flag.
Pledge of flag. To the flag. To the states of America. To the people of our country. To the nation of America. To the people. To the citizens of our land.
The invocation is going to be directed to the many, many students that are going to be graduating from college this month. So this is directed to them. Where it brightens their day in future. Help them to follow their dreams. Inspire them with great things. Let light of wisdom scream forth into their minds. Let purpose guide their wills. Guide their success through life and bless them. The future is yours. Don't let it go upset. You have so much to offer. Amen.
Coach call the rule.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alvin Lake.
Here.
Alvin Westen.
Here.
Alvin Catalero.
Here.
Alvin Thompson.
Here.
Alvin Woodward.
Here.
City Attorney David Hawthorne.
Yeah.
First item.
Whereas Francis Butch Bonney passed from his life on April 11th, 2003, at his home, 63 Erie Street, Fulton, New York. Whereas he retired from the city of Fulton after 32 years of outstanding service in the Department of Public Works. And whereas his outstanding service for the city of Fulton set a standard of excellence, which is a testimony to his dedication and love for his city and his job. Whereas he was a communitet of the Church of the Immaculate Conception and served his country in the United States Marine Corps. Whereas he is survived by his wife Shirley Bonney of 43 years, his four daughters Dorothy Tetro, Karen Hubbell, Maxine March, and Mary Ann Bachelor Fulton, his two sons William Toot Bonnie and Francis III Bull Bonnie, Paula Fulton, his sisters Dorothy Outercurt, Clarimo, Yepa Outercurt, and Jeanette Poropodi of Fulton, a brother Hank, Henry Hank Bonnie of Fulton, ten grandchildren Sidney Tetro, Hunter Hubel, Jen March, Sarah March, Osipas Bonnie, Chelsea Bonnie, Whitney Bonnie, Sierra Bonnie, Kim Bachelor, and Josh Bassett. His son-in-law's Tim Tetro, William Hubbell, his daughter-in-law's Nancy Bonnie and Lisa Bonnie, Paula Fulton, and several nieces and nephews. Whereas the mayor, members of the common council, members of his community, his family, his friends, and all city workers who will sorely miss this fine man who touched so many lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, members of the common council, share a great sense of loss with his family and friends, and do with deepest regret take official notice of the loss of this very special man. Be it further resolved that this resolution of respect be spread upon the official records of this common council meeting of May 6, 2003, and copies of it transmitted to the immediate family of the late Francis Butch Bonney.
I'd like to add that, Your Honor.
I'd like to second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mrs. Bonney?
I'd just like to say a few words. Butch Bonney was a very hard-working, dedicated city employee as, as City Clerk Joe Tetro mentioned, for 32 years. He was a foreman. He was well-respected by his fellow employees. And he has a great family who will miss him terribly, as all of us will. I also want to acknowledge the fact that the City Clerk Joe Tetro, at the services for Butch Bonney, did an excellent job of talking about him and about his family. So I wanted to thank Joe for his, his efforts and the time that he was there at the services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Ruth Collins Wickham was born 100 years ago on March 11th, 1903, in Yonkers, New York, the daughter of Florence A. Hawkins and Olga Tyler Hawkins. Ruth's father, who was a manager of some of the finest Woolworth stores, died when she was, was young. And her mother returned to Plaski with Ruth. And her sister Evelyn Ruth graduated from Plaski Academy in 1921. Received a bachelor of science degree from the State University College of Albany in 1925, and a master's degree from Syracuse University in 1941. She taught high school science for nearly 30 years in Camden and Hudson. In 1953, she married Frank Wickham and moved to Fulton. She taught science and algebra at Fulton High School from 1956 to 1958. In addition, she was an active member of the Presbyterian Women's Organization and a member of the Salvation Army auxiliary. She was a member of Fulton Reading Circle and an honorary member of the 1889 Shakespeare Club. Ruth is an avid reader and gardener. She also collected Tiffany and other decorative glasses, as well as original paintings. At one time, she corresponded with Grandma Moses. Her husband Frank passed away in 1977. The city of Fulton would like to take this opportunity to recognize Ruth Hawkins Wickham as a cherished member of the community, who still has a sweet smile and gentle laugh, and who gave off, gave of her time and abilities to make Fulton a better place to live. Thank you and happy birthday Ruth, in appreciation of Ruth Hawkins Wickham, May 5, 2003. Michael K. Stafford, Mayor of the City of Fulton.
We don't get a chance to recognize many of our citizens that get to be 100, because not many of them do. So I think it is, is quite an accomplishment in this day and age to succeed for 100 years here.
Your Honor, that's in a former revolutionary resolution. You need to have something to add to that.
No, this is a proclamation.
Okay. I would like to say that when I first met Mrs. Wickham, she was working in her garden. I see her periodically. She's a wonderful lady. She's pretty sharp. And I intend to take the resolution or the proclamation up to her. I'll have it framed and I'll take it up to her. Presently, she's at St. Luke's in Oswego. So I see her occasionally and I'll go up as soon as I get a frame for the, for the resolution or proclamation, whatever, and I'll take it up to her and from you and the council.
I have the original here. Next item.
Whereas more than 40 million Americans of all ages suffer from mental health problems such as depression, schizophrenia, anxiety disorders, serious emotional disturbances, and others. And together, these different disorders make mental illness the most prevalent health problem in America today. More common than cancers, lung, and heart disease combined. Whereas the most severe of mental illnesses are disabling, requiring dignified assistance with the first person struggling to meet their most basic needs. And whereas Americans recognize that mental health care services in their communities can effectively treat many disorders, and the city of Fulton has made a commitment to provide mental health care services in the community to all residents, whether the problem is temporary or longstanding. Whereas the city of Fulton is working closely with state, federal, and private healthcare providers to assure all city residents needing physical and mental health care services receive the help they need. And in 2003, Step-by-Step Clubhouse has taken a lead role in including the recipients of mental health services in the process of planning community services on both the system and individual level. And whereas the city of Fulton, having a long tradition of assuring the provisions of services which afford people experiencing mental illness professional treatment and necessary support, recognizes that the complete health of Fulton residents significantly contributes to the quality of life of the community. And the complete health includes mental well-being as well as physical wellness. And whereas May 16th and May 17th, 2003, is May Festival III, a celebration of artists recovering from a mental illness and aiding in the fight against stigma and misunderstanding against, associated with mental illness. Now therefore, I, Michael Stafford, Mayor of the City of Fulton, New York, who hereby designate May as Mental Health Month, and urge the residents of the city of Fulton to take this opportunity to participate in May Festival III and learn more about mental illness, mental health illnesses.
Is there someone here this evening from Step-by-Step Clubhouse? Would you please come forward? Next item.
Next item is special assessments of property owned by Stephen Peck, 401 Utica Street, Antonio, Derrigadak, 314 Seneca Street, Edward Verdi, 601 Potave Avenue. A special assessment will be assessed against these properties for demolition removal, trash removal.
Your motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next item.
Resolved the minutes of the council meeting held on Tuesday, April 15, 2003, are hereby approved.
Motion?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next item.
Whereas by resolution number nine five, nine dash five, 2003, this council authorized the mayor to sign a quit plane deed to Fulton Community Development Agency, contraband known as Site 17B, at the northeast corner of North First and Unitis Street. Whereas said deed retained unto the city as an easement from entry onto said premises for access to any municipal utilities. Whereas it's been determined that there are no municipal utilities lying in the southerly 100 feet of said premise, and CDA is requesting a release of the easement as to said southerly 100 feet. Therefore be it resolved that the mayor has authorized a sign, a release of easement as to the southerly 100 feet of said premise, and he has further authorized to sign any and all papers necessary to record said release.
I'll operate, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next item.
Resolved that the right-of-way request submitted by Mr. Gary Deef from Dover, 605 West First Street, Fulton, New York, for the purpose of a new driveway which will be located on the Green Street side, be referred to Fulton Planning Commission for the review.
Motion?
I'd like to move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry. Next item.
Whereas the city was authorized, the city clerk was authorized to advertise for property auction, property located 609 Utica Street, Fulton, New York, at this council meeting in May 6, 2003. Whereas conditions of the sale shall be a minimum bid of $50, bidding increments with a down payment of 10% or in full at the time of the auction, payable to the city clerk with a balance due to the city clerk, if any, 30 days after said auction. Whereas said property is subject to any easements, restrictions, or covenants, if any, of record affecting the above described property. Whereas conveyance of the property to the successful bidder will be by quit plane deed. Mayor Stafford will declare the auction over.
Anyone caring to bid on this property, please come forward and give your name and address for the city clerk's record.
Oh, you had people interested? That's why this came back out. This was, we tried to auction this off before, but nobody wanted it. And then, about a month ago, two people came across the street, said they were interested. I started getting thrown out of the agenda. I told them both it was going to be on the line. Nothing. So...
There is no one here interested on bidding on that property?
If you want to table it, try again. Well, as a technicality, I know the last resolution said there's going to be a sign up, put up by the DPW. The sign never went up.
Didn't?
Only because I know that it's right across your house.
I don't know. No, I thought that we were going to do that, and it was advertised, so you'd have to re-advertise it, but we should be consistent, put the sign up. Because we were going to do that on all these.
I was saying just pull it, to be honest with you. They can't be bothered to come here.
As there are no bidders, I will declare the auction void. Next item.
I've sat here in the council, I've never had that happen before.
And we had no takers for a buck. Now we've tried 50 bucks, the more times we advertise this, the higher the price is going to get.
What are you, what are you suggesting? Are we going to re-advertise and what are you going to do with it?
Nope. So you know it just like we did with the tax. We'll continue on it until somebody shows true interest. It's all 60 by 100.
Okay, next item.
Resolved that clerk is authorized and directed to advertise for public hearing to be held on May 20th. Council chambers located on second floor of the municipal building regarding Fulton's local law, which would amend Chapter 157 of Fulton City Code entitled Taxi Caps.
I'll move that.
Second?
Second it.
Well, for the record, maybe we should explain to the general public what this is all about.
It's, it's an adjustment of the, we've had a request for an increase in the taxi I'm not sure when they were adjusted last.
Well, actually, being that I do not have a driver's license, sometimes I have to take a taxi, they've already adjusted their rates. And they did it illegally. I guess in our charter, it specifies that we are the body that decides whether they get an increase in their fares or not. And I happened to take a cab over here a couple weeks ago, and the rates were higher than they were a previous time that I had taken a.
How much? Do you remember how much, John?
No, but they have been adjusted already.
Well, if, if that has happened without this, you need to report that to the police department so they can investigate, because that is.
Well, I would like to put that on record, then.
Because there are, there are limits, and we are, the city is empowered to set those and has set them, and they've been in place for years, and they're not supposed to charge over that.
Right.
But you don't know the exact what you're going to charge.
No.
I'll look it up and talk to you about it as far as how much they're allowed to charge.
With the, with the new light of John information, I'd like to withdraw my second.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose it.
I will do.
Oppose, first and second ward, motion carried.
Thank you. Next item.
Resolved that Fulton Housing Authority salary schedule has approved by the Fulton Housing Authority Board of Directors, is hereby approved as per cash.
Is there a motion?
I'll operate, Your Honor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry. Next item.
Resolved that the right-of-way proposal submitted by Jeff Cobb, 317 South Fourth Street, paved slash blacktop driveway on the state street side, including right-of-way of the edge of the street, and requests the city to remove damaged sidewalk and curvy be referred to Planning Commission for the recommendations.
Motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next item. A couple of questions have come up in regards to the, the amount of the projects going into the capital projects and equipment on anticipation note for 2003. Alderman Sahaski has asked that this resolution be tabled until the next meeting, until we can get some information together on costs for paving of the major repairs that need to be done within the city. That will work, except for item number one, on the list of the reconstruction of the city parking lot, the $100,000.
We have a commitment there.
If, you, if the council will commit to that tonight, to allow the awarding of the bid for that construction project, then I have no problem with tabling this, the BAN until next meeting.
Ed, when do you want to meet? I think the whole council should meet and say.
Well, I believe we have meetings on, can't we set that up for this coming Tuesday?
Sure can. That's fine, yeah. In other words, you, there's something you, you want to increase, but, and that's fine.
Yes.
But if somebody else wants something else increased, and somebody else wants something different, they should.
Yes.
Get it all quick as we can, so when he does the one for 100,000, we can.
You could do that at the committee meeting next Tuesday.
We'll do it next Tuesday night, 6 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Now, can I have a resolution that, that $100,000 for the reconstruction of the city parking lot will be included in the BAN resolution?
Have you got something made up, John?
Well, not anything prepared, but it wouldn't be that hard, you know. The motion would be for the, the reconstruction of the city parking lot in the amount of $100,000. It will be authorized by the council as, as part of this project.
I'll operate, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
I think it's a project that's going to cost almost half a million dollars, and if, if our, the city's contribution is 100,000, I think it's a, certainly it's a good, good project.
Mayor, how much fund are we getting from the state on this? State fund?
We are getting, we've been granted $200,000 from Senator Wright as part of that, and CDA is putting in over $100,000 to complete the project.
Okay, good project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have a, we have a motion by Alderman Sahaski to table the rest of that panelist.
I'll second it.
You've got a list, oh, we have a second now. We'll table it until the May 20th meeting?
Do you think?
Well, it'll be back on for the 20th.
Oh, back on the agenda. We're going to talk about it front of, but we'll try to get everything.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next item.
Whereas the city clerk received sealed bids on April 17, 2003, regarding the proposed canal landing parking lot renovations project. Whereas the bids were open and read aloud as follows. Barber Corporation, $457,000, with alternates, $476,700. Raleigh Construction, $527,500, with alternates, $571,400. H.G. Spicer, $614,012, with alternates, $642,052. Whereas bids were reviewed by Mr. Ron Edick of Fulton Engineering, Engineering Department. Whereas by his letter dated May 2nd, copy of which is attached, Mr. Edick recommended that the low bid of Barber Corporation in the amount of $476,700, which includes alternates. Therefore be it resolved that the low bid of Barber Corporation in the amount of $476,700 is hereby accepted and awarded to Barber Corporation in the amount of $476,700.
I'll operate, Your Honor.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carry. Next item.
Resolved that the right-of-way request submitted by Mr. Peter Cambroni to pave the area from the sidewalk to the road and the length of his duplex at 303, 305 Pine Street, Fulton, New York, be referred to the Planning Commission for the review and recommendations.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Next item.
Resolved that the city engineer's office be authorized to prepare specifications, and the city clerk be authorized to advertise received sealed bids in his office on or before June 3rd, 2003, up to 2:00 p.m., and to be publicly, publicly opened that same day at 2:15 p.m. in the council chambers, relative to the tree and stump removal in the city of Fulton, in accordance with specifications prepared by Fulton Engineering Department.
Motion?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Mayor, before we ask, is any of this going to relate to our recent ice storm?
No.
Any of this tree removal?
It may, yes. We have, we have gone through over half of what we have budgeted for tree removal already this year. If, if we get the FEMA designation, we'll be reimbursed up to 75% from them and 12 and a half percent from the state for what we have spent.
I guess what I'm asking is, is some portion of this tree removal going to be part of the, the ice storm versus not of the ice storm? And are we going to keep track of which is and which isn't?
Yes.
Okay, then that leads me to another question. If that's the case, I'm, I'm ready to support this, but I have a question about tree removal and trim removal. Trim removal and tree removal related to the ice storm. Let's go forward with this right now.
This is just to get somebody on contract, because they were, the contract had expired, the ones we had from last year, for, for tree, tree and stump.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Speaking of FEMA, what's the status of our request?
As of yesterday, they said, they figured it would be about another week and a half before we know.
How does the, the process work in a nutshell? I mean, I know there were tornadoes in the south yesterday, and the president has already declared a federal disaster area. Is that jumping ahead of us, or is there just something lost in the translation?
That may be jumping ahead of us. A lot of buildings were destroyed.
We know there's been damage to what's going on elsewhere, but it's been a month here.
Right. Now, as of a week ago... a week ago, Thursday, they finished up their assessment in thirteen counties, filed the reports, compiled the reports and filed them with Washington. We were told we would probably hear within two weeks. Do we have a second?
We have a motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas the common council adopted the city of Fulton Comprehensive Plan on April fifteenth, two thousand and three. Whereas the common council directed the establishment of an ad hoc committee to update the city zoning ordinance in a manner consistent with the comprehensive plan. Now therefore be resolved that the ad hoc committee shall consist of following individuals. Representing the planning commission, Algede O'Farini, Kenneth Patrick Junior, Nancy Cavalier, Sandra Westrin, Matt Bixby, Robert Jennings, Al Moser. Representing the zoning board of appeals, Anthony Revior, Jeff Kunsweiler, David Pontecchio, Carol Vescho, Michael LaRocque, Hugh Moore, Kimberly Garrel. Representing the chamber of commerce, Betsy Sherman Saunders. Representing the Clinton Comprehensive Plan Committee, Carol Rutledge. The ad hoc committee shall hold a public hearing for each zone change being considered.
When they have their public hearings, are they going to be individually advertised or is it going to be advertised as a group?
They will, they will, I think, be handling them one at a time.
You think or do you know?
No, I don't know it.
For each zone change?
For each zone change, it's going to be individual, yes.
That's the way I would see it.
Now, can more than one be held in the same night?
I understand that. I want to make sure that if I open up the daily news, I see this address and this area and this area.
Yes.
Not just-
For each individual-
To consider the changes in the comprehensive plan.
For each individual zone change, there will be a public hearing. We have a, we have a motion. You'll be an advisor.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Alderman Thompson. And we have a second from Alderman Woodward. All in favor?
I got a question, Your Honor. Is there a mechanism in place in case one group decides to vote no against a zone change and the other one votes?
The zone change has to come back to the common council for approval.
Right, but what if one group says no and the other group says yes? It still has to come back here then.
They are, they are meeting as a, as a joint committee.
Okay.
And they will make recommendations back to the council and it is up to the council to implement the zone changes.
Okay.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item.
Result that the mayor be authorized and attend the mayor's conference to be held on June first, June fourth at Hudson Valley Resort, Herhaxen, New York. Set item as a budgeted item.
Motion?
I'll move it, but I'd like to have one saying, Mayor, with this conference. And that is, you have been attending the conference for many years. You have certainly brought back a lot of important information to this council and I'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next item.
Whereas the limited physical protection provided by motorcycles increases the risk their drivers face. Motorcycles are less stable and more difficult to see in traffic than other vehicles. Exposed to the elements, motorcyclists need to take special care with uneven road surfaces and unexpected debris as well. And whereas other motorists can help reduce the risk motorcycles face by taking some simple precautions. Specifically, drivers should recognize motorcycles, right to use a full traffic lane. They should also take special care when judging the distance of oncoming cycles and be prepared to respond to motorcycles. Need to avoid road hazards. And whereas by taking the steps necessary to ensure their safe operation, those who ride motorcycles can significantly reduce the risk they face. Other motorists should also help by respecting the rights and special needs of motorcycles. Now therefore, I, Michael K. Stafford, Mayor of the city of Fulton, New York, on behalf of the entire city of Fulton, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and three as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Fulton, New York.
Thank you. Is there anyone from Abate here tonight? Next item.
Whereas the benevolent and protective order of Elks has designated the week beginning on the first Sunday in May as Youth Week to honor American junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to community, state, and nation. Whereas Fulton Elks Lodge Eight Thirty will sponsor and observe us during this week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community. Whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. Whereas our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we along can give in order to help to develop those qualities of character essential for future leadership and to go forth and serve America. Whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore, I, Michael K. Stafford, Mayor of the city of Fulton, do hereby proclaim the week beginning on the first Sunday of May fourth as Youth Week and urge all departments of government, civic, paternal, and patriotic groups, and our citizens generally participate wholeheartedly in its observance.
Is there anyone from the Elks here?
Do we notify people that are going to be recognized by proclamation? Do they, are they notified so that they-
When they, when they request the proclamation-
They know when it's going to be on the agenda?
We tell them when it's going to be in, usually they say that they're going to be here.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any business to bring before the council? Please come forward to the microphone. We did that last meeting.
You did that last meeting?
Yes, we did.
Oh, well, you told me it was going to be this meeting.
Well, okay. We got it, we got it on the agenda last meeting. It was right into the minutes I have. After the meeting, I will get you the certificate I have in the office.
Thank you very much.
I was surprised that you weren't here, now I know why. Thank you for all the work that you've done, your club has done for cleaning up the North Bay campgrounds. It's really appreciated. Thank you. That's what I knew was in the last one. Is there anyone else that has any business, bring before the council. On the council.
Uh, Your Honor, I've had a request by Dr. Foose, Frank Foose of one oh six West First Street South to amend the parking restriction over there to allow just forty-five minute parking. Because there's becoming problems with people parking there all day long and this client's not being able to park there to go in and get his professional service, so I'm wondering what-
You requesting a traffic study?
Or what the next procedure is.
Next would be a traffic study on, on West First Street.
Right.
Dr. Foose, okay.
And it'd be on the west side of West First Street. South.
Philip Street South, right, Joe.
Right.
South of Philip Street. We'll process the work order tomorrow and then-
Okay. And then also, I would just like to thank Ron Edick. This is a fellow who's worked for the city of Fulton for quite a long time and doesn't get much praise from the council per se when things get done in the city. He has done a tremendous job with the storm that we had just a few weeks ago and he's continued to do a great job with our tree program and I just want to thank him for doing such a nice job.
He has definitely hit his hands for labor.
He has.
There's no doubt about that.
Done a very nice job.
Second ward.
Yes, a while back, Mayor, I requested a traffic study on Cedar and West Fourth, especially with students coming out of the high school. And my suggestion was the possibility of a four-way stop sign there. I've never seen a study.
Okay, I'll check to see what the status is.
Got to be asked.
Don't ask them.
Anything else, Ed?
No, that's all, thank you.
Third ward.
Sure, I got a couple of things. First of all, I want to encourage people to go to the Step-by-Step Clubhouse festivities on the sixteenth and seventeenth. I've been there, is this, is this the third one, is that what you're saying? I've been there for the last two years and it, it's good food, it's good music, and most of all, it's good people. It's a wonderful event, it's at Boores Park. It's right across the street from the clubhouse and I got a tour of the clubhouse and it, I was just in awe of the responsibilities that everyone had and how, how excited they were to, to see everyone in the community and, and see what they're doing, so. I'm certainly recommending that everyone spend some, spend some time up there in the park. The second thing, of course, has to do with the, with the brush removal and I think we've had some of the, you know, I've talked to the mayor a number of times. Is there-
I'm going to have to talk first.
Should we?
That's all there is to it. You go and-
I, I will yield to the mayor on the brush removal.
On, on the brush removal. What, what the status is right now. The expense for the weekend of the ice storm from early Friday morning until eight o'clock Monday morning was over a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That really wasn't a budgeted item, so we'll have to work to try to find some funding someplace if we do not get funded by FEMA. Since that time, we did have the DPW crews working overtime. They worked twelve-hour shifts for the first week or week and a half after that because we had two state DOT crews that were in here that we weren't paying for. They were donated volunteers of sorts that came in and they were working twelve-hour shifts and our people worked twelve-hour shifts at the same time. Since then, they've been having at least two crews, if not three and four crews out, not only running some of the branches through the chippers to eliminate those, but also using dump trucks and payloaders to remove the debris. We will continue to do that with as many crews as we can put out there pending anything else. I did advise the DPW commissioner that I would appreciate tomorrow if he could find a couple of people that could go out and try to patch some potholes because they're raising their ugly little heads again. They are going to continue working on this. At this point in time, this is mainly cosmetic. If we have a, a serious situation someplace, we will try to address it. You need to call the office and we'll see if we can do it. They're trying to work down streets continuously at this point in time to get the, everything picked up. One of the things that's been brought to my attention is on some blocks, they cleared off a block one day and the next day people had brought stuff from their backyards out and filled it back up again. We're, we're going to take care of this, but we're going to make it all the way through the city one time before we go back through a second run. It's going to take a lot of time. If we get approved, the designation from FEMA, they will authorize us to hire contractors and provide overtime payments for our crews. We can extend the hours that we're doing that to clean it up as quickly as possible. Without their help, at this point in time, I cannot justify overtime to clean this mess up. It happened overnight, but it's not going to get cleaned up overnight. We just haven't got the money and the budget to do it. Just for instance, our, our DPW budget's broken into two sections, snow removal and maintenance of streets. The snow removal half of the year is January, February, March, October, November, December. I have been advised that January, February, and March has used the total snow removal overtime for the year. If we get storms in October, November, December that require overtime, we got a problem. So, I just can't justify the use of overtime wages at this point in time. If we get the FEMA designation, then it's a go and I want to get it cleaned up just as quickly as possible. If, if we get that, we'll only have to pay twelve and a half percent of the expense. FEMA will pick up seventy-five and the state office of emergency management will pick up twelve and a half percent is what I've been told. So that, we're waiting for that, the decision on the designation. There are thirteen counties across the upstate and western New York that are involved in this, uh, claim to FEMA. They were designated a state disaster area by the governor, but it's up to the federal government to go along with that determination. The assessment team that Commissioner Graham and I took around the city a week or so ago, were impressed with the amount of damage that occurred in such a short period of time here. So hopefully, we're going to get the, the funding for it. But that's, that's where that stands right now. If anybody has the vehicle to take their limbs out to, to Valley, out to Bristol Hill, they will accept them up there with no charge. So if, if you've got the, the truck to do it, by all means, we can definitely use the help, somebody taking care of their own. With the small branches, please don't rake them out into the, into the road. Every time we get a rain, it just washes them down the catch basin and so plugs up the, the storm source. If you can put them in bags or put them in some kind of a container, the trucks are coming around, they are picking up yard waste along with this, using a packer to do that, so. But they need to be in containers just as usual to, to get picked up and please don't, don't rake them out into the yard. That's very important, or out into the street.
That, that would have been my question.
Okay.
You gave all the answers.
Okay.
That's good. I think the only thing I'm concerned with is, um, once we get the funding, the availability of contractors.
We will, you know, we will reach out, we've, we've got-
Because they're going to have to come in with equipment and people.
Tree people that have already given us their names that if this happens, they-
They'd be, they'd be ready to go then.
Would like to come and work for us.
Do you have an estimate what it was, what it was possible?
We, we don't know, I, I, I'm not even sure right now how many tons we've taken out there. It's just, it's just massive, the, the tonnage that we have taken out to the landfill already. When, when I first looked at it, I, I was thinking four to six weeks, you know, with our people doing it, and that's way short. Up in your ward, a week or so ago, they, they had a chipper up there and it took them five hours to do two houses on one block.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, well, another thing, if you stack your, your branches out there, if you put all the, all of them in the same way instead of just crisscrossing them, it does make it quicker and it would be appreciated. That is one of the things that, that took a long time at this, these two houses. They had them all intermingled and it was just a mess. But it, it's just a very time-consuming, labor-intensive task right now.
Just got a question, Ed. Will they take, just say, the city, if they take the low dollar, will they take the, the land, or whatever they have?
They've, they've got a, a piece of equipment up there that grinds everything up. up. They're, they're taking it to Bristol Hill.
What I was thinking is, uh, like today, I was up in Webster and they had, uh, they had a piece of machinery with a, with a, with the forks on it and they were loading them in dump trucks. I mean, instead of us going around doing all the chipping and taking so much time consuming doing that, I'm wondering if it would be easier to rent a PC equipment so, so we're not paying so much in labor and taking it out and letting them chip it?
What we are doing, we, we've got both crews out. We've got two crews out, at least two crews a day, not, we don't have that piece of equipment, but we have, uh, the front-end loaders that are loading dump trucks with us and, and taking it out there. It, so we've got, we're, we're trying to do all we can on a constant basis. So they're...
I was just thinking is, you know, we, we take a lot in labor because this is gonna, this is gonna be an all summer gap. There's definitely a lot of brush out there.
Right.
And if we did it by the dump trucks, instead of doing chipping it ourselves, taking it out to the county, we gotta save a ton of time.
Right, but we only have X amount of pieces of equipment that we can use, so... Yes, I, I understand that and if we get the, uh, if we get the FEMA money, that's one of the alternatives right there is to go out and rent more equipment and we put more crews out.
My second question would be, um... The May Day parade is still on, right?
Memorial Day?
Memorial Day.
Yes.
Okay, and so, or do you have a plan on, on taking care of the room?
Most certainly. Most certainly.
Thank you.
I've already heard from about three or four different people involved with the parade that said, "That's gonna happen, isn't it?" I said, "Yes, that is gonna happen." Thank you. Anything else? Third word.
Fine, thank you.
Fourth word.
Just briefly to reiterate again, because, uh, I'm seeing some tree limbs, whether purposely or wind-blown, are out in the road and I would, uh, strongly ask people to please put them back onto the curb side or on the sidewalk side, get them out of the road. It's hazardous. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Fifth word.
I had a phone call tonight from Jim Wright's office. And after about, uh, four and a half years, the Senate and the Assembly have finally passed the bill that allows us to get rid of a slippery court parking. So I would ask that you call, I don't know, who should you call? Probably call Wright's office back.
They'll need to let us know.
Are they gonna let you know when the governor signs that? Because that's all that's waiting for them. As soon as the governor signs it, they can go on the agenda and we can finally be done with it.
And then we finalize it, just like we did on the last...
Of course, he's upset, son.
Who's upset?
The governor, you know. He's not real happy with legislature.
He has other issues.
He's not gonna sign anything.
That should be, yeah, probably that'll be signed.
Re-crowning a tree.
Well, it's taken five friggin' years to get this done, but, you know, that's all.
Okay.
So I just wanna make sure that we find out somehow, some way, when the governor signs the bill.
We will.
So that we can throw it on the agenda as soon as possible.
Yep, we'll do it.
So that's not another year.
Soon as we, soon as we hear, we'll do it. Sixth word.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I mean, there's a thousand things, but everybody's busy, so when they're done...
I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for pending litigation.
I'll offer that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.